All right, I would like to call this evening's meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order on this Tuesday, the fifteenth of November at seven P M. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is our nation.
If the clerk would call the roll. Supervisor Pat Breslin. Supervisor Headland.
Here.
Supervisor Score.
Here.
Supervisor Steen.
Here.
Supervisor Zons.
Present.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Willsey.
Here.
Supervisor Quinn.
Here.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Whitzel.
Yeah.
Supervisor Kneer.
Yeah.
Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Calabrese.
Here.
Supervisor Keeter.
Here.
Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Sean Breslin.
Here.
Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Robinson. Supervisor Morehouse. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Thomas.
Here.
Supervisor Prochnow.
Here.
Supervisor Gilbert.
Here.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Here.
Supervisor Bauer.
Yes.
Supervisor Lino.
Here.
Supervisor Hartung.
Here.
Chair McCullough.
Here.
Sorry, I came out weird. That's, that's fine. Um. So we will begin with the approval of the minutes. Supervisor Steen makes the motion. Supervisor Lena seconds. Any additions or corrections for the minutes? Supervisor Steen.
Oh.
All right, seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, minutes are approved. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. I guess I will begin this one with, given the veteran today has just passed, wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank all of our veterans, both here in the county and our, and in our broader community. It has been the tradition of this board to ask those veterans who are present to stand and be recognized, so if and y'all are willing. Thank you. Do we have any other communications? Then on to the public hearing on the proposed F Y twenty twenty-three budget and property tax levy. Doesn't look like we have anyone who wants to speak in that segment. All right, we will close the public hearing segment and move on, oh, sorry. Public, well, no, that's, that's the next thing on the item, so, public hearing, then public comment. All right, and now on to public comment. We have a list. Our clerk will go grab our list. First up is Carol Breslin. And then if you could state your name and address and hold the comments to about three minutes.
My name is Carol Breslin, my address where I live at N one three six zero seven County Road Q Downing, Wisconsin. I'm a resident of Dunn County. I'm here to, I'm here tonight to express my concern over the proposed tax levy as well as the resolution to borrow up to a million dollars. I am also here to voice concern over the legislative ordinances that would add additional fees and regulations to our small businesses in Dunn County. At a time when inflation is exploding and the U S dollar is teetering on the edge of collapse, additional spending and borrowing at the county level is dangerous and ill-advised. During the last election cycle for the county board, it was mentioned more than once that the high level of debt in Dunn County would likely be paid down and reduced using COVID funds. I am not aware that this has been done. In fact, we're talking about borrowing additional money. This is troublesome in a time when fuel prices are high and fertilizer costs are through the roof. Dunn County taxpayers are feeling the crunch of this recession and cannot afford more. Now is the time for responsible stewardship of our community resources. And while our taxpayers are tightening their belts and reducing any costs where they can, an increase in county debt, which will impact our property taxes, is distasteful. In one of the first meetings of the new board, a Dunn County wheelage tax that was set to be sunset this year was made a permanent tax. If I'm reading the highway department report correctly, this unexpected revenue brought in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year alone. So that should have given a little relief to the budget. We have community needs, but with our own, but as with our own homes, there will be years of plenty and years of lean. This is definitely looking like it will be a year of lean, so we would do well to anticipate that and adjust our spending accordingly. I'm asking you all to vote no to the tax increases and increased borrowing. I'm also asking you to vote no to any legislative ordinances that would further burden our small businesses in Dunn County through additional fees and increased regulation. Our small businesses are already suffering and have not recovered from the burdens of COVID. They are all feeling the weight of the troublesome economy as well, and as the backbone of our community. I am asking that you not put additional undue burden on them. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Jim Euler.
Dear county supervisors and manager corpora, my name is Jim Euler. I reside at eleven twenty-one Evans Lane in the city of Menominee. Now is not the time to take on extra debt or to raise taxes. The mothership of Dunn County protects a lot of people. But it too must be protected. Dunn County, like most others in the state, is in turbulent seas, namely the recession or pending recession for those who don't agree with that terminology. The pending recession, if you don't agree on semantics. Yes, we have some in the mothership who have special needs and who might be getting splashed right now. But we are all still afloat. However, to tip the ship to make it more dry for some on one side of the boat, risks capsizing or sinking the whole enterprise. We had rockets landing in Poland today. We have snow on the ground and it's not even December yet. We are in turbulent seas. Please remember the gales of November and your fiduciary duty to keep a tight ship. Please vote no on new taxes.
Thank you. Those were all of the members of the public that signed in, is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I will read a public comment submitted online on Tuesday, November fifteenth at three forty-five P M. Kelly Hayes submitted the following. Please read for the record during public comment, I would like to voice my opposition to the unnumbered resolution for a proposed tax levy in Dunn County. The unnumbered resolution to borrow up to a million dollars as well as a number of items listed on the twenty twenty-three legislative agenda. It is always prudent to live within one's means, whether we be a household, county, or state. I'm calling on the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to live within their means. First and foremost, it is fiscally and morally responsible. Secondly, the people of Dunn County literally cannot afford to have their taxes increased. We are hard pressed to put food on the table as it is, and in light of the recession that America finds itself in, that I am opposed to further borrowing. We should not be increasing projects or spending at this time. I am very disheartened at the number of legislative agenda items, particularly two E, the establishment of the groundwater quality program. As important as our groundwater is, another government program is not the answer. Item six calls for modifying and/or amending levy limits or implementing a county sales tax. It does not deal with the real issue of who keeps our property tax dollars. We are all aware that when property taxes increase, the state increases its piece of the pie, leaving counties and townships with an unproportional increase, if any at all. We need to be addressing that issue at the state level, not continuing to seek more tax dollars from the taxpayers. Item seven supports an increase in a gasoline sales tax. Do I need to reiterate, we cannot afford an increase in our taxes? In closing, government on all levels must function within its means. Thank you for your time, Kelly Jo Hayes, N one one three one zero five hundred and seventieth Street Wheeler, Wisconsin. Do we have any other public comments that came in electronically? All right, then I will close public comment and we will move on to appointments. So you have the list in front of you, do I have a motion to approve the appointments? Supervisor Steen moves, Supervisor Larry Bjork seconds. Any speaking to the appointments? Doesn't look like it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Report of the county manager, over to you, Chris.
Good evening. I would begin with the review of the purchase orders over forty thousand dollars. You should have had them in your packet and they were all highway department expenditure related. Are there any questions about any of them? Seeing no questions, I will move on. I just wanted to provide a brief update to you about some communication work that we've been doing. If you are a Facebook follower of Dunn County, you would have seen our inaugural county manager message preceding the county board meeting, our goal, I have been working with Dan Dunbar and Krista Vind in I T to, Krista is our web specialist and obviously Dan's our I T director, working with the two of them to look at ways that we can improve getting the word out to the public around the work that we are doing, both as a board, as departments, as department heads. We even have a loosely knit plan to do, meet your county board members, so we'll be looking for volunteers who want to be our first subject for a little video on county board. Our, our inaugural presentation or video that we put together earlier or late last week for tonight has garnered about six hundred and fifty views. So people have paid attention, I can't say that they've watched the whole thing or took anything home from it, but at least clicked on the link and were interested enough to, to do that and to see what we might be offering by way of proceedings at the county board. So our hope is to increase community engagement and awareness of the work that you are doing and that the county is doing to serve the constituents of Dunn County. So more to come on that as we move forward, but we're going to plan on doing one of those each month before the county board meeting. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Chris. Onto the reports of departments. Highway Department Financial Report, you have it all in front of you. If any of you have any questions, I am sure that Dustin would be happy to answer them. Do I, any questions for Dustin? Supervisor Lino. Dust, you want to come on up and?
Dustin, I have one question, if I may. It has to do with cash and investments at the end of twelve thirty-one twenty-one. I see a blank there. We had no remaining cash in the accounts there.
You're talking the audit report?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and I guess I, that one I can't really explain a whole lot, that was the audit report that was done by an outside agency. I don't know, Piata can explain that a little bit more in detail.
No, that objection?
Thank you, what that means is that when we ended the year twenty twenty-one, the cash come, there was no cash at hand, even though we did end the year with a surplus, so you will see cash available in twenty twenty-two audit. Because we were running a deficit the year prior to that.
So the checkbook was empty is what you're telling me.
We were, we had a deficit, yes.
Okay.
This is the first year that Highway was able to end the year in a surplus.
All right, thank you, it just caught my eye.
That's okay, yeah, since it was depleted, the fund balance was depleted, that was, that was our position, and in twenty twenty-one, we actually are in favor.
All right, thank you very much.
Sorry, twenty twenty-one audit.
Okay.
Got to get my ears straight, excellent question, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Looks like you're off the hook.
For now.
Thank you, Dustin. County Treasurer Financial Report, does anyone have any questions for Sophia? I'm not seeing any, it looks like you're not even going to be on the hook. All right. Neighbors of Dunn County, does anyone have any questions for Carmen? Looks like you also are not going to be on the hook this evening. I think that going forward, Chris and I have discussed a little bit, not returning to the full in-depth version of these reports, but having a little bit, something more, a little more educational for the boards, there's a little bit more interaction with the, with the various heads. We're still in discussions on exactly how to do that, but I, I thought that it was worth letting you all know that we are, we are discussing the best way to approach that. Okay, consideration of resolutions, reports, and ordinances from the standing committees. Judiciary in law, resolutions supporting an increase in pay for assistant district attorneys. Do I have a motion for this? Supervisor Calabrese makes the motion. Supervisor Bauer seconds, speaking of motion supervisor Calabrese, do you want to?
District Attorney is requesting that the board approve this resolution. The District Attorney for the Assistant District Attorneys, their pay rate that is set by state statute has not kept up with the national average in other counties for similar positions and, and this resolution is asking the governor and the legislature to increase the starting wage for assistant district attorneys to something more competitive with the other rates around the country.
Thank you Supervisor Calabrese, any others speaking to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Planning Resources Development Ordinance approving a zoning map amendment for lots. One and two of C S M three four nine two, Ray Whitkey, Town of Sherman, do I have a motion? Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Willsey seconds, speaking of motion Supervisor Quinn.
Just a real quick, this is a, a rezone that resolves a kind of a knotty land use problem on Town of Sherman and allows a local business to continue operations in a way that avoids conflict with the residential area. And it was something that both the town board and the town planning committee directly voted to recommend to the county. So we recommend approval.
Thank you Supervisor Quinn, any further speaking to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Lost my place scrolling here for a moment. Amending ordinance nineteen dash twenty-seven? Yeah. Okay, Health and Human Services Health Department Ordinance amending nineteen dash twenty-seven, this is the first reading. Can I get a motion to put it on the floor? Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Sean Breslin seconds, my apologies. So this is the first reading, this will come back at the next meeting. Do we have any speaking to that at this point in time? Okay, we will discuss this next time around. D Committee on Administration. Resolution cancelling checks over two years old, do I have a motion? Supervisor Headland and Supervisor Lino seconds, speaking of resolution, Supervisor Headland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the, I guess, board members who've been here for a while would know that these come up every year, and so that the, what is happening is that these are checks, if you notice, are all quite small. Most of them are written out as personal checks and our history of this is, over the years, has been that many of these checks were rewards for things like four H displays at the fair, prizes for animal shows, things like that. And people oftentimes frame them as part of their, I guess, award for winning and they don't cash them. So we, at this point, will put that money in a sense back into the general fund. If someone actually lost their check and would, remember they never cashed it, they could come back and we would issue a new check. At this point, though, for all counting purposes, we want to cancel these checks and get them off the records.
Thank you Supervisor Headland, any further speaking? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution charging back illegal tax certificates, do I have a motion? Supervisor Headland and Supervisors on seconds. Speaking to the motion Supervisor Headland again.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this one is in your packet. If you've noticed, they're all the same parcel. At the top, it describes what that parcel is and also it's in the Town of Sherman and it is part of a road right of way. And so these taxes shouldn't have not, not been charged or issued in the first place, so we charge them back to the Town of Sherman. Because basically they are in error, and so we are correcting it at this point.
Thank you Supervisor Headland, any further speaking? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution amending the inventory of job classifications, do I have a motion? Supervisor Headland and a second, Supervisor Lino, Supervisor Headland?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. If you know, there are a number of of job classifications we wish to add. And when we add a job classification, it isn't necessarily adding a job. And most of these are that way. It's, some, most of these positions in the past have been contracted labor. And so therefore, people were performing these jobs. We were paying a, a part of a group or part of a private entity to provide these services. The explanation goes on, again, we're adding custodians back to our staffing. The education employment specialist part of Health and Human Services and serves a broader area than just Dunn County. Substance Abuse Counselor is what we're going to call that, that person who we received a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to C J C C for handling people with substance abuse problems in our jail. And then the positions, other positions for our transportation department. Those are four different positions there. And again, we are canceling our contract of service and are going to hiring employees to serve Dunn County. That is it, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Headland, any further speaking to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. E, the neighbors of Dunn County Resolution Regarding Year End Balance Change, can I get a motion? Supervisor Kneer and Supervisor Whitzel seconds, speaking to the motions Supervisor Kneer.
Thank you, Chair. The background information explains it pretty well, it's just a way for the neighbors to have a little more flexibility now that their buildings are getting older, to take any funds left at the end of the year and apply them to upkeep. So if you have further questions, I think Carmen's here.
Thank you Supervisor Kneer, do I have any questions or speaking to the motion? Supervisor Larry Bjork first, and then I believe Supervisor Rogers.
Oh, I got two things, first I want to jump back.
I'm going to do the dental in a moment. But, but.
Well, okay, well, that isn't it. I enjoyed our packet, and what I also enjoy about our packet is getting to see who works for Dunn County. So I wasn't fast enough on the draw to say, good job Dunn County Treasurer's Office in showing me who we are. And I've checked with other counties and most of our county's employees are hands down more attractive than other counties. Anytime it can get your picture into the well, not a lot of counties, but anyway, I thought that was very nice. Okay. Speaking to, to, back to the neighbors.
Yes.
Happy to serve on that committee and again, I just want to say how they how they, how they address problems to correct them. The C N A thing wasn't brought up as far as training C N As. But I mean, you know, they're not just sitting there saying, oh, poor us, we can't get enough people. They're positive and going forward and saying, we're going to hopefully train and retain C N As. So I kind of have an idea that's how the neighbors operate, because what they bring to the county board just shows me that they are working to correct problems, not just saying, well, here's where we are and we can't do much, so I wanted, wanted to commend them on that.
Thank you Supervisor Bjork, I, I heartily agree. Any other, Supervisor Rogers?
So I guess I'm a little confused on why we're leaving the money in the, into the neighbors instead of just funding the repairs as all the other buildings, or is this going to be like the jail where it's got a separate fund that is used only for repairs for that facility? Can you enlighten me a little bit more, Carmen?
I believe Carmen is going to.
So the idea with the change is, so for example, this year we had excess money from twenty twenty-one and then we'd carry forward only what's approved in the capital improvement budget. So say we had fifty thousand dollars improved for capital improvement for twenty twenty-two, we could have carried it forward to just pay for the approved capital improvement, so instead of hoping that we have that money the next year, if we had it the previous year, carrying it forward instead of returning it to the general fund and then asking for it back from the general fund through the capital improvement project, so it's just, instead of moving it back and forth, keeping only the approved amounts. Does that make sense?
Why is the repairs different than the repairs at the other buildings that don't go through the standard capital improvement? Protocol.
So that's due to the, it being an enterprise fund. And so how we always go through the protocol the same way, but we typically use in our listing, it says fees as what we're going to use, so instead of using the current year's fees, we'd use what we had excess fees from the previous year. So instead of banking on what we might have next year, we're using what we know we have, so we're only budgeting for what we know we had money for from the previous year. Instead of moving it back and forth, does that make sense? I take, yeah, I take a so using this last year as an example, there were
So using this last year as an example, there were, I, I believe there were capital improvements approved for the 2021 budget.
Correct.
But they were to be funded only by fees. Um, and so the, the neighbor, the administration at the neighbors has been reluctant to spend that money, not knowing what their end of the year position is going to look like. And so in this particular year, they returned 1.3 million dollars to the general fund and didn't fund those capital improvement projects. So what they're saying is they're wanting to exercise good fiduciary responsibility by saying if we have excess revenue in one year, let that fund what we have approved in our capital improvements. And then we won't be either spending money that wouldn't, if, let's say it was getting up to the end of the year and they were close to zero, they wouldn't be purchasing those capital improvements and going backwards. Um, they would be essentially sending, spending cash that they, or you know, funding that they knew that they had. So.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions efficiently Supervisor Rogers?
Yes, it does.
All right. Uh, uh, Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, it's great to see that you're making money. And maybe some of that surplus could go towards, uh, paying back what you owe the general fund over the last 10, 12 years. Cause it's been a lot of years, it's been deficit, deficit, we had to pay like five hundred or six hundred thousand or a million dollars towards your budget. So once you are in a good financial shape, instead of having all that money go to, uh, capital improvements and that should be covered by depreciation, it'd be nice to have some money paid back to the general fund.
So this would only be for the amount that is approved through the projects through the capital improvement. So say, using last year as an example, say this year we had fifty thousand dollars, only fifty thousand dollars would be held back for that capital improvement. The rest of the money would then go back to the general fund. So I, I don't know of a single year we've had 1.3 million dollars of capital improvements. So with this structure, if we would have had this last year, quite a bit of money still would have gone back to the general fund as it did. So it wouldn't be everything, it would just be the capital improvements that were already approved.
Like Supervisor Bjork, any further speaking to the resolution? Supervisor Willsey.
Is this a roll call vote?
No.
No, okay.
This is a, just a simple voice switch. Oh, you could request it to be. All right. Uh, any further speaking? All right, if the clerk will call the roll. Supervisor Keter.
Yes.
Supervisor Keter votes yes. Supervisor Lino.
Yes.
Supervisor Lino votes yes. Supervisor Prochnow.
Yes.
Supervisor Prochnow votes yes. Supervisor Quinn.
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn votes yes. Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers votes yes. Supervisor Score.
Yes.
Supervisor Score votes yes. Supervisor Steen.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen votes yes. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen.
Yes.
Supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes yes. Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes no. Supervisor Whittle.
No.
Supervisor Whittle votes no. Supervisor Zons.
Yes.
Supervisor Zons votes yes. Supervisor Bauer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bauer votes yes. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
No.
Supervisor Pat Breslin votes no. Supervisor Sean Breslin.
Yes.
Supervisor Sean Breslin votes yes. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese votes yes. Supervisor Gilbert.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert votes yes. Supervisor Hagan.
Yes.
Supervisor Hagan votes yes. Supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Hartong votes yes. Supervisor Headland.
Yes.
Supervisor Headland votes yes. Supervisor Johnson. Oh, sorry. Supervisor Kinnear. Supervisor Kinnear votes yes. Chairman Colla.
Yes.
Chairman Colla votes yes. That passes. Motion passes. All right, uh, jumping back to the, uh, D four resolution adopting 2023 dental premiums that I unfortunately skipped over a moment before. I need a motion approving. Supervisor Headland and Supervisor Lino. Uh, speaking to the resolution Supervisor Headland.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, each year we, we adopt, uh, as part of the budget, uh, the benefit package that we give our employees. Uh, you, you have approved the, uh, health benefits previously. And this is a dental and there was some, uh, uh, research and work that had to be done by personnel in order to get this put together and it got a little later than the, than the health did. But, um, it's a very good dental package for our employees. Uh, the provider is going to, uh, I guess guarantees the rates for two years. And if you, uh, look through the, uh, numbers that are there, um, the county pays a flat fifty dollars towards any plan. So if you look up and down the line, except for hard time and retired uh, employees that still retain the, in, in pay. But it's, uh, if you, any of you, uh, buy your own insurance or work somewhere where you buy insurance or pay part of it, this is a really, really good plan. And, uh, I was, uh, extremely pleased with, with our personnel department worked out. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Headland. Any further speaking to the resolution? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Oh, oh, sorry. Been trying to keep, keep track of the electronic. All right, any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, on to Executive Committee. Uh, resolution approving the FY 2022 budget adjustment for the Sheriff's Department, District Attorney and Human Services. Money comes in, money goes out, we need to adjust the budget appropriately. It's one of our normal bookkeeping. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Lino seconds. Um, any speaking to the resolution? All right, this is a budget adjustment, so it is a roll call vote. Supervisor Lino.
Uh, yes.
Supervisor Lino votes yes. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes yes. Supervisor Quinn.
Yes.
Supervisor Quinn votes yes. Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers votes yes. Supervisor Score.
Yes.
Supervisor Score votes yes. Supervisor Steen.
Yes.
Supervisor Steen votes yes. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes yes. Supervisor Willsey.
Yes.
Supervisor Willsey votes yes. Supervisor Whittle.
Yeah.
Supervisor Whittle votes yes. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes yes. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes yes. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Yes.
Supervisor Gary Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
Yes.
Supervisor Pat Breslin votes yes. Supervisor Sean Breslin.
Yes.
Supervisor Sean Breslin votes yes. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese votes yes. Supervisor Gilbert.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert votes yes. Supervisor Hagan.
Yes.
Supervisor Hagan votes yes. Supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Hartong votes yes. Supervisor Headland.
Yes.
Supervisor Headland votes yes. Supervisor Kinnear. Supervisor Kinnear votes yes. Supervisor Keter. Supervisor Keter. He's muted. Supervisor Keter, you are muted.
He's nodding yes.
Supervisor Keter, or Supervisor Keter nods, yes. Um, Chairman Colla.
Yes.
Chairman Colla votes yes. Motion passes. All right, uh, F two, resolution adopting the FY 2023 budget. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Headland moves. Do I have a second? Supervisors at Calabrese. Um, speaking to the motion, this is substantially the same budget that was presented at the last uh, meeting of the county board, um. We can go through it a bit more. We can certainly answer questions if people have them. Um, I will note that while we have put one, up to one million dollars of borrowing into the budget, it looks quite likely that we will be borrowing much less than that or not at all. Uh, we had to make some very, we want to make the most conservative possible judgments about both expenses and revenues when we present the budget. So, speaking to the budget. Any questions or statements or do we, are we going, good to go move right on to the vote? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of approving the budget?
Hi.
Any opposed? Budget passes. Resolution adopting the FY 2023 levy. Now we have to pay for the budget. So do I have a motion for the levy? Supervisor Quinn moves. Supervisor Steen seconds. Any speaking to the levy? Seeing none. Oh, there is one.
Supervisor Kinnear.
Supervisor Kinnear.
Just, I have a question, uh, looking back at comments. Uh, what would, what was the increase in, would you say per capital levy? I'm not quite sure how you can do it at per hundred thousand or whatever, last year to this year.
Beata? Without objection, we will bring our CFO up.
Sorry, I was trying to find my budget workbook. Yes, yes. I don't have a whole thing, but, okay. All right, can you repeat that question for me, please?
Uh, thank you. Uh, we had, uh, some comments about raising taxes. So whatever is the easiest way to explain it, what would be the increase on a hundred thousand dollar home? Or what would be the increase in, in, uh, per capital levy?
Uh, right.
From last, from 2022 to 2023.
Yes, thank you. Excellent question. So the increase, what you're referring to is a mill rate would be a three point zero two percent increase for, uh, 2023 in comparison to 2022. And can you provide a, with the dollar amount on the hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So for, and to, thank you. For 2022 would have been on a hundred and fifty thousand home val, uh, home valued at that would have been nine hundred and ten dollars and eighty one cents. With the budget in 2023, it's nine hundred and thirty nine dollars and fifteen cents. So that's twenty eight dollars and thirty four cents increase.
Supervisor Rogers.
Does that reflect, are we a year behind of our borrowing when we have them numbers? So that don't show the three million we borrowed in 22, correct?
It, it would because it was part of the budget when it was submitted that we would borrow three million.
It is the debt service starting in 2023 on the 2022 borrowing is included in that number.
Supervisor Kinnear.
Uh, another question, uh, the possibility of buying, uh, our, our borrowing for 2023 that's included in this increase, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's built in, it's built into our budget. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Kinnear. Uh, any further? Supervisor Willsey.
Uh, so question on this, so if you vote yes on this, you're voting to raise taxes on just this resolution, you're saying?
Yes, that, that is, that is correct. When it comes down to borrowing the nine million dollars, it's only going to be dependent on the need. So right now we're working on a financial tool that's going to allow us to look at our financials on a regular basis. We'll be able to project and get a better understanding where we are stand, uh, where we might be or anticipate to be at the end of the year. So what we, like for example, in 2023 to, so in the mid-year, we should have sufficient data to be able to have some really solid projections to then determine if we're going to borrow or not. But the way this is presented, this is based on a levy that we're asking for to cover. So levy is, um, it, right, so it, that debt service increases. So what's built into the 2023, the, the assumption that there might be that nine hundred and six thousand, not, not more than a million need. So if we don't borrow, then that would be reflected.
And we will certainly hold off on borrowing into as late as the, as the year as possible. And as I said, um, there's a good chance we won't need to borrow that money. Uh, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so, so, so has the, um, the million dollars not to exceed that apparently is included in the 2023 levy if you need it. It's not.
It's included in the budget, it is not included in levy.
Okay.
It is a separate item.
So do we know today what that million dollars is going to cost Dunn County? I'm just trying to think of how interest rates have raised. Is that something we don't know or something we do know?
So the interest rates, you know, we don't know what the interest rate is going to be when it's time to borrow. When we borrowed this time, I believe it was shy under, I want to say two, three percent, under three percent.
Right, but you anticipate that that's going to be the level of interest rate?
No, that's an excellent question and I would need to get back to you as I would need to advise with our, um, financial advisors, our debt advisors to give me a better feel of what that may look like.
I just feel uncomfortable saying that we're going to go out and acquire funds and really don't know what it's going to cost us. Okay, but that gives, that's coming up. So maybe I'm off. Thanks.
Can, uh, Chairman Colla, can I comment?
Sure.
So just, just to be clear, in the last resolution, you passed a budget that in, that was balanced, including a million dollars worth of borrowing. And now in this resolution, you're passing the corresponding levy that was used to balance that budget. So there's, there are fees and, and things that we charge money for, that's some of the revenue. We get some grants and allocations, that's some of the revenue. We have the registration fee, um, vehicle registration fee, that's some of the revenue. Um, but we also have levy and borrowing to make a balanced budget. So this says this much levy will be allocated to borrow that, to balance that budget. In the next resolution, you would deal with the borrowing part of it. Just trying to be clear.
Well, and statutorily, we are required to have a balanced budget. Any further speaking to the levy? Uh, sorry, Supervisor Willsey, did you? Any further speaking? All right. Roll call vote. On the resolution adopting the 2023 property levy. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes yes. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes yes. Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Rogers votes yes. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score votes yes. Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Steen votes yes. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes yes. Supervisor Vandermeulen. Supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes yes. Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes no. Supervisor Whittle. Supervisor Whittle votes no. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes yes. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes yes. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes no. Supervisor Pat Breslin.
No.
Supervisor Pat Breslin votes no. Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Sean Breslin votes no. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese votes yes. Supervisor Gilbert. Supervisor Gilbert, can you say that again?
No.
Supervisor Gilbert votes no. I think he said no.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes yes. Supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Hartong votes yes. Supervisor Headland.
Yeah.
Supervisor Headland votes yes. Supervisor Kinnear. Supervisor Kinnear votes yes. Supervisor Keter.
Yes.
Supervisor Keter votes yes. Supervisor Lino.
Yes.
Supervisor Lino votes yes. Uh, Chairman Colla.
Yes.
Chairman Colla votes yes. Motion passes. On to the resolution of borrowing not to exceed up to a million dollars and
Onto the resolution of borrowing not to exceed up to a million dollars and providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes. That is a mouthful tonight. All right, do I have a motion? Supervisor Steen, do you have a question or do you want to make the motion?
Have a question on the last one. I just want to read out the the no's and the yeses, please, on the vote.
Sure, sure.
On adopting the twenty twenty-three pop property levy. The following supervisors voted yes.
You don't have to name them. Just count. Give me the count.
Oh. Good, good question.
The county clerk has to count three times. It's in my nature, just with votes. I didn't mean to overwhelm you. That's right. The totals are twenty in favor, six opposed.
All right. Motion on the borrowing. Supervisor Lino makes the motion. Do I have a second? Supervisor Calabrese. Speaking to the motion. Questions, further comments, supervisor Sean Breslin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with. Larry Borg that we really shouldn't be. Approving this now when we don't know what the interest rates are and Federal Reserve is raising rates every month. We could be getting way in over our head on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Breslin, supervisor Steen.
If I'm understanding this correctly, and you walk me through this, that if we approve this, we're saying that. We're giving you the authority to borrow a million dollars if you need it. Not to say that you're going to encumber that debt. The first of the year, is that correct?
And and up to, yes.
Yes. So there would be no borrowing involved until you needed it. And at this point in time, I mean, I my question would be, when do you anticipate it? If you do. Having to access those funds.
Chris, do you wanna?
I can. Okay, so a couple of different things, one that I'm a little bit more reluctant. To say in a public meeting, but I'm going to anyway, because I think it's important to this discussion in twenty twenty. Two after we working, working in so many different years in this year's budget to balance the budget. The county board last year approved moving one million dollars out of our self-funded. Workers Compensation Fund. Into our health insurance fund for the purposes of funding the services that in part that we're purchasing through reform medicine. The hope was that by folks using staff using reform medicine, we would. Decrease our health insurance fund. Because we're self-insured for that as well. So the premiums go into the pot, the claims come out of the pot. And we're hoping that the that staff using reform would reduce the claims. So far, that is true. Very true. And secondly, it appears as if. That million dollars would not be necessary. The savings being a being realized through reform medicine. Will more than pay for themselves essentially. So that million dollars is sitting there. What I don't know and what we're researching is. Can we re? Allocate that money instead of borrowing this year, reallocate that money. But we don't, I don't know that at this point in time. There are two different kinds of funds. Beata and I are new. We have people that we can seek out guidance for that with. The numbers that I'm reporting to you in this meeting, like I say, I'm reluctant to report them because they're not. You know, it's not a solid done deal. We're not done with the year yet, but things are looking very, very positive. So that's one piece. That's why when we say. We don't know if we will need to borrow the money. That's one piece of it. Secondly. The executive committee is aware that when we. Looked at our vacancy rate, the labor market is a little bonkers. And there is a lot of change in movement. We generally, when people leave the labor market, they're leaving at a higher rate of pay than they're coming into the labor market. So. We are at, so we budget a salary and fringe amount. And if we look at that number over the last. Five years. For the three of those five years, we were about two, two to three percent. Under, so we budgeted about two to three percent more than we needed because that changeover kind of met. It was we were close. In the last couple of years, it's been closer to ten, ten percent, twelve percent. So we conservatively used two percent of that to bring in some, but we but we probably have. Someplace between three and seven percent more wiggle room in that. So our plan would be to look at the budget in kind of mid-year. Beata's worked really hard over the last couple of weeks. Developed to develop a tool that has not existed as long as I've been involved in Dunn County government to be basically be able to do. Monthly projections. Pull them pull the information out of our financial system and work with the department heads to do projections. We probably won't do them every month. Because that's a little labor intensive, but we will probably do them quarterly for you. So you'll have a a look. Roughly in the first quarter, end of the first quarter, where the numbers are still pretty iffy because. Early in the year and. If you do business in January, you pay the bills in, the bills come due in February. You pay them someplace towards the end of the month or into early March. So if you look at a financial report at the end of March and you're looking at. Sort of you're you have valid numbers through January, which is not much of a projection. But by the time we get to the mid-year, it should be much more reliable. And certainly by the time we get to the end of the third quarter. So if our hypothesis is correct that we are over budgeting salary and fringe. Not because we don't have people in those positions now, but because there will be changeover in those positions, then we have a little bit of wiggle room there. So there are moving pieces that we can consider as the year goes forward. This resolution basically says to borrow to balance the budget. There could be a going forward of up to a million dollars of borrowing. If we were to borrow, that would come to you in another resolution that you can yay or nay. The bar, the actual borrowing and that could happen mid-year, could happen late. Our bond advisor told us it would be about a three-month lead time from start to finish in order to borrow money. So we could go as late as like probably September. Before we needed to make a decision about borrowing, we'd have pretty solid financial numbers at that point in time. And you at that point in time could have some say so to say we would come to you. We you could say at that point in time, we don't want to borrow a million dollars now. Find it someplace else. So there are options that will be on the trade table as the year goes forward. That that don't exist right now because of the unknowns. In terms of the interest rate, it's just impossible to speculate. You you see how volatile financial situations are. Our goal is to not borrow money if we don't have to.
Supervisor Headland.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and and thank you. County manager. Just remind this group. This is a proposed budget. This is what we feel you all voted on. You came here and worked on it together as a group and spent hours doing it. It's all part of everybody here. It's not just me. It's not just our board chair. It's not just our. County manager. It's all of us. We worked on it. We said this is what we're going to do. And it's a budget. We're not going to force anybody to spend all this money. What we're going to spend is what we need. That's what good county government does. It spends what it needs to provide the services. The people you voted you into place are asking you to provide for them. And so if we don't, as explained, if we don't need to do it, we don't think we will. I don't think we will. I pressed at our admin meeting. To get our county manager and our CFO to agree, can't we develop some tools? To get us the numbers as we go forward throughout the year. And they're working very hard at it. They just told us that. We've never had that before. And we're going to have it. And that's going to be a good thing. And I think you'll like it because you'll be up to date quarterly where we stand. You'll see a trend and if we're going good, you'll know that when it comes time to, do we borrow or don't? I'm guessing we probably won't have to. We don't know that. But that's my guess. Thank you.
Supervisor Calabrese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in the in the first whereas of this resolution, it says that the borrowing. Will only be for highway projects and capital improvements. Is that correct? Okay, and so if you said, as you said, county manager corpula. If and when it is necessary to borrow, you're going to bring that back to the board for approval anyway.
That's correct.
Then could it could you explain the benefits of having this in the budget now? When we would have to approve potential borrowing anyway.
This allows us to work with a bond advisor to formulate a request. That would actually then come forward in the form of resolution. So if we got to, for instance, mid-year and believed that we were. Things weren't looking as we anticipated, and we were going to need to borrow money, the lead up to that and and the getting ready for that, this just. If this some, correct me, Nick, if I'm wrong, without this piece of it. You have a million dollars and I say you collective you, you have a million dollars in the budget that's essentially unfunded. So if you choose to not pass this resolution, you have an un, we we we. I'll just use the we, we have a unbalanced budget. This is the action that you're taking to bring forward a balanced budget. Then later in the year, it allows us to do some prep work with the bond advisor and then bring forward the process of actually borrowing money. But this is essentially saying, like the last resolution, we're going to use this much levy. And we're going to use this much borrowing, and this is the total budget, and this is a part of that process. So if you choose not to pass this resolution, then we would, then you have, then we have to come back and talk about where is that million dollars coming from and but believe. Has to happen tonight. Because statutorily, we're required to pass the budget tonight.
Supervisor Rogers.
Thank you.
So to reiterate a little bit of what was already said, but months ago, we had a full board meeting to discuss the budget. We worked through that. We come up with the parameters that we're using now. Over the last few months, we've continued to discuss this and work on it. And we've had many discussions about borrowing and not borrowing. Last month, this came in front of the county board and was read so that this is coming back for the second month. We're at the twelfth hour now. I voiced my opposition in the past to borrowing money. At this point, I've accepted that that's where we're at. I'd like to remind everyone, next year, we're going to borrow a lot more money. If we don't have, and if you don't want to borrow money again next year, which I know this is next year, but we need to start earlier. Then the day before, we have to have the approved budget to discuss where we're going to cut money, what we're going to do if we don't borrow money. And how we're going to move forward. So that's why I'm supporting this is because we've had the discussions over the last few months and this is. Where we're at. Not necessarily what I completely agree with, but I've accepted it.
Supervisor Calabrese, did you? Supervisor Steen. All right. Roll call vote.
On the resolution authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed a million dollars and providing issuance of issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes therefore. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes yes, supervisor Quinn, supervisor Quinn votes yes, supervisor Rogers, supervisor Rogers votes yes, supervisor score. Supervisor score votes yes, supervisor Stein, supervisor Stein votes yes, supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes yes, supervisor Vandermeulen, supervisor Vandermeulen votes yes, supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes yes, supervisor will see. Supervisor will see votes no, supervisor Whittle. Supervisor Whittle votes no, supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes yes, supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes yes, supervisor barrier. Supervisor barrier votes yes, supervisor Gary Bjork, supervisor Gary Bjork votes yes, supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes no, supervisor Pat Breslin, supervisor Pat Breslin votes no, supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Sean Breslin votes no, supervisor Calabrese, supervisor Calabrese votes yes, supervisor Gilbert.
Yes.
There's Gilbert votes yes, supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes yes, supervisor Hartong, supervisor Hartong votes yes, supervisor Headland. Supervisor Headland votes yes, supervisor can here. Supervisor can here votes yes, supervisor Keeter.
Yes.
Supervisor Keeter votes yes, supervisor Lino. Supervisor Lino votes yes, Chair McCullough.
Yes.
Chairman McCullough votes yes.
That passes. Wait. Okay, now I have to do it again. It is twenty-one in favor. Five against. That motion fails. All right, we need to find another million dollars before we can leave. Motion failed.
That requires a three quarters.
Nick, Nick, can I ask a question? Would it be?
Yes, sir.
If if anybody who voted no wanted to make a motion to reconsider. According to Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes.
We could proceed down that path and revoke, correct?
Yeah, that would be an appropriate parliamentary process.
And it is two thirds of the full county board, not just those present?
Three quarters.
Sorry, three quarters.
Full board, yes.
So that is. That is twenty-one point seven five people. So that's seventy-five point seven five person. That's twenty-two people.
Supervisor Rogers.
I have a suggestion moving forward, but maybe we're not at that point.
We might want to call supervisor Morehouse and supervisor Robinson.
Yeah, the the action's been taken, so it would have to be, it would require someone from the. The. Prevailing. Outcome, which would be no's. To make a motion to reconsider.
Supervisor Rogers.
If we're not, if we don't have a motion for that, can we explore the option of using the? The COVID money. Trans and as we had on one of our other options in the past.
Or we could just, someone could make a motion to take it out of the general fund for that matter. But we are statutorily required to produce a balanced budget. So we are here until we produce a balanced budget. And because the budget is passed, it takes a three quarters majority to change the budget.
I'm suggesting a break to do a little research to make sure that we're clear that we have to have a balanced budget tonight. And so maybe to take a little break and come back in ten minutes or so, and we will, we'll, we should have an answer.
We are recessed for ten minutes. Yeah, I'm just. All right, we are going to. Go back into session here. And we have a number of ways we could proceed. Probably the simplest one going forward would be for a motion for reconsideration. Uh Supervisor Willsey.
And then make a motion to reconsider.
Thank you Supervisor Willsey. Do I have a second? Supervisor Bjork, thank you Supervisor Bjork. All right, um, the vote is a motion to reconsider the previous resolution. Uh, do we have any? Yes, Supervisor.
May I speak?
Um, sure, I think.
On, on the motion?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I, I think Supervisor Willsey made the motion, so if he wants to speak first.
That'd be great.
And, and just to keep everyone on the same page, this is only addressed to the motion for reconsideration. Once that has to be voted on, and then once that's voted on, the other motion comes up.
Well, may come up. Yeah.
Well, yeah.
All right Supervisor Willsey.
Is my mic on? Okay. Um, after talking with some people here, I I feel comfortable in voting, changing my vote on this and because it will come up in a future vote to prove it. So I feel at this point to balance a budget, I would change my vote.
Thank you, Supervisor Willsey. That's, that's very brave of you. I know it. Stepping back from things can be really tough sometimes. I, I admire it. Supervisor Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I reluctantly uh second Mr. Willsey's motion. And uh anytime you, you taxed your neighbors. And uh, I've spent a lifetime in, in uh farming and transportation. And your hundred and fifty thousand dollar house doesn't mean nothing to a farmer. Diesel fuel at five dollars and fifty cents a gallon really hurts. So Dunn County, um, I, I, I think that, that they they can tight, tighten their belt as much as they can. And uh I wish that this would have proceeded the other two motions as far as the levy and the budget. You know, sort of like if you need this to pass, maybe it should have been first, so.
Thank you Supervisor Bjork, and I, I admire your courage in this as well. Thank you. I, I genuinely appreciate it. All right. The motion to reconsider. Uh, we can do this if, if someone would like to call for a roll call vote, we can do that. Otherwise, this is a simple majority voice vote.
Only the reconsideration.
Yes, the motion for the, just the motion for the reconsideration right now. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion of reconsideration, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, now I believe the next step here is, do we need to reintroduce it with another motion in a second or?
No, the, the, now the resolution will be taken up as it was just before the vote was taken. So it, it, the resolution is now on the floor and subject to discussion and debate. And at the end of that, the vote is taken and it's subject to the same rules. It requires three quarters. Uh, or uh, twenty-two, at least twenty-two yes votes.
Thank you, Nick. All right. Is there any further speaking on this? Seeing none, if the clerk will call the roll.
I was told this was the last meeting that we would be doing voice votes. We're gonna be using the system in the spring. I'm quite excited about that. All right, on the uh, resolution number sixty-three, resolution authorizing the borrowing of not to exceed a million dollars and providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes therefore. Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Quinn votes yes. Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Rogers votes yes. Supervisor Score. Supervisor Score votes yes. Supervisor Steen. Supervisor Steen votes yes. Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Thomas votes yes. Supervisor Vander Mullen. Supervisor Vander Mullen votes yes. Supervisor Vogel. Supervisor Vogel votes yes. Supervisor Willsey. Supervisor Willsey votes yes. Supervisor Whittle. Supervisor Whittle votes no. Supervisor Zons. Supervisor Zons votes yes. Supervisor Bauer. Supervisor Bauer votes yes. Supervisor Barrier. Supervisor Barrier votes yes. Supervisor Gary Bjork. Supervisor Gary Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Larry Bjork. Supervisor Larry Bjork votes yes. Supervisor Pat Breslin. Supervisor Pat Breslin votes no. Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Sean Breslin votes yes. Supervisor Calabrese. Supervisor Calabrese votes yes. Supervisor Gilbert.
Yes.
The Gilbert votes yes. Supervisor Hagan. Supervisor Hagan votes yes. Supervisor Hartong. Supervisor Hartong votes yes. Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Headland votes yes. Supervisor Kneer. Supervisor Kneer votes yes. Supervisor Keeter.
Yes.
Supervisor Keeter votes yes. Supervisor Lino. Supervisor Lino votes yes. Supervisor Prochnow. Supervisor Prochnow votes yes.
Chairman McCullough.
Oh Chairman McCullough.
Chairman McCullough also votes yes.
Chairman McCullough votes yes.
The ayes are twenty-four, the noes are two. That passes. The motion passes. Um, thank you all for your votes and consideration. I will now move on to item G Legislative Committee twenty twenty-three Legislative Agenda. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Steen and Supervisor Lee now. Supervisor Steen, do you want to speak to the legislative agenda? All right.
Uh, this is a new committee that was formed uh, uh, in the beginning of this year. We thought that uh, it would be a uh, a way to kind of narrow down and, and dig a little deeper and, and involve our committees. With working on whatever ideas they thought would be beneficial to the uh, benefit of the county. And so we had all the committee chairs go back to their respective departments and ask for any uh, uh, input from their department. And which they all did, and I appreciate everybody's work on that. We brought it together and we had the meeting last week. A couple additions that were added, but pretty much it's the same agenda that we had last year. Uh, we feel, I feel at least that it, it gives people a place to come and have a voice without having to come before the whole board. And it gives them an avenue to express those uh, those wants. I think uh uh all of us felt that the, and it was unanimous what we added. Uh, and by the way, the Legislative Committee is the Executive Committee, so we had some good discussion on, on things and I think everybody agreed to a man or a woman to what we brought forward, so. I would urge the board as a whole, uh, I hope you read them, uh, and uh I, I would urge the board to support this. I, I think uh uh, we're planning to have our legislative contact with our legislators in I think the middle of January or so. Uh, and they had indicated to us that that might be a better time for them to uh, receive our, our thoughts uh, before they went down to Madison and got going. So that's why we did it this way. Hopefully we'll be more effective uh, than we have been in the past. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor Steen. I'm gonna add just a tiny bit of historical context for newer members to the board. I think it was four or five years ago that we began the process of each committee bringing forward uh things that we would like to see our legislators at least can consider and inviting our legislators into a special meeting of the county board to talk with us about our legislative agenda. And I know a number of other counties um are considering adopting a similar process. They were, they were, they thought that it was quite a good idea that we had had. And so uh, moving it out of the individual committees to the Legislative Agenda Committee was a way to make it slightly more formal and um considered process. Uh, so any speaking to the motion? Supervisor Hagan.
I just had a question. We recently had a advisory referendum on the ballot. And that seems, the results of that, I was wondering, is that something that would be um, relevant to the legislative agenda to address?
We, we did discuss that. Um, we are looking into the best way to address that. It's probably, uh, since it was passed by the voters of Dunn County and it is directed to the uh, federal government primarily. Uh, we will probably report it into the appropriate level there um, via the clerk, but, but we may, there may be further follow-up on it.
Thank you.
Yep, so the notice uh, when it was passed in July to place it on the ballot was sent to all of the congressional legislators in Wisconsin. Um, Board of Canvas met on Monday certifying the election results, so that information will be going out um, tomorrow morning uh, to the legislators. Um, notifying them that that resolution passed.
Great, thank you.
Any other speaking? All right, that was uh, Steen and Lino, I believe. All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. All right, announcements. Uh, first, we're gonna have a county board and senior management meet and greet uh, December fifth. Right here at three thirty, uh, give the supervisors a chance to meet with senior staff. Talk to maybe the supervisors you're not always sitting next to, uh, generally have a, a social event rather than the policy-driven quick meetings that we are, are normally taking. Um, our next meeting will be Wednesday, January eighteenth. Um, twenty twenty-three at seven o'clock PM. Do we have any further announcements? Uh, the clerk.
If you have a per diem sheet, this is your last um, county board meeting to turn your per diem sheet in. So if you have those, please turn those in tonight. Um, if you like to wait till the end of the year to turn in your per diem sheet, I don't know who that would be Supervisor Zons. Uh, you have, you have a little bit of time left. Um, but if you do not get it done tonight, please uh, bring those to my office. Um, also if Supervisors Calabrese, Quinn, Headland and Steen would see me for signatures tonight, that would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh yeah, certainly, uh, Nick.
I've never done this before. Um, I'm in the American Legion. I'm the commander of post thirty-two here in Monominee. Uh, the American Legion Riders Association is gonna be having a brat stand at Fleet Farm on Friday. So if you wanna, anyone wants to come out and see me dressed in a lot of outdoor clothing and ten degree weather. Come by and get a brat. All proceeds are used for uh, assisting veterans and for vet, veterans uh, causes and activities. Thanks.
Thanks Nick, that sounds fabulous. Anyone else? All right, we are adjourned.
It was like, is this gonna be the second Tuesday in a week that I'm gonna be here at midnight? We'll see.
I'm gonna make the meeting notice.
Yeah, yeah. I put the, um, I put it up to date on the calendar, but I'll make sure we post the notice.
Yeah, and all it's gonna say is, it's social gathering, only no discussion.